We'll call this meeting to order. I will begin with an invocation if everybody would rise. Mr. Stark, would you pray for us?
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to gather in a free country and discuss the the issues at heart here at San Juan County. Lord, we ask you for your wisdom, that you guide this body, that they make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our citizens. Lord, we're thankful for our employees. We're thankful for those in public safety, those in public works and parks and facilities that have dealt with flooding, and all of our employees that each and every day are out to to help build a stronger community here in San Juan County. Please keep them safe in their their daily activities. Lord, we also ask for your blessings on this meeting, our country, our state, and our county. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Commissioner Lanier, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one vision, indivisible and infinite.
That brings us into, we're in our regular meeting. I'll stand for approval of the agenda. Are there any changes that anyone would like to make or that we need to know about?
Mr. Chairman, there are no changes necessary for tonight.
So moved.
I'll second. Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. I presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to the consent agenda. Item number one, consideration of special meeting minutes from June seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Number two, consideration of regular meeting minutes for July second, twenty twenty four. Number three, consideration of treasurer check register for June twenty twenty four. Number four, consideration of finance check registers for June twenty twenty four. Number five, consideration of resolution number twenty four dash twenty five dash eleven, twenty four, twenty five, twelve, and twenty four, twenty five, thirteen, which are the disposition of surplus and/or obsolete county property. Item number six, consideration of resolution number twenty four, twenty five, eight, to assign authorized officers and agents for New Mexico Environmental Department Capital Appropriation Project number SAP twenty four dash I four one eight two dash STBR. Item number seven, consideration of resolution number twenty four, twenty five, nineteen, to assign authorized officers and agents for the New Mexico Environmental Department Capital Appropriation Project number SAP twenty four dash I four one eight zero dash STBR. And item number eight, consideration of memorandum of agreement with McKinley County authorizing DWI and incarceration services. Item number nine, consideration of amendment number two to the cooperative agreement with the NMDOT for design of Pinyon Hills Boulevard Extension Phase Three. Number ten, consideration of resolution number twenty four, twenty five, sixteen, fiscal year twenty twenty four, final quarter financial report year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. I presume that it passed unanimously. Brings us to item or to new business, item number one, which is a presentation of the Crisis Triage Center Business Plan for San Juan County from RI International. Mr. Sevedra.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mr. Chair, County Commission. I'm here today to introduce the San Juan County Crisis Triage Business Plan and RI International will be presenting the business plan to the County Commission. Just want to refer back to San Juan County's twenty nineteen behavioral gap analysis, identifying services, treatment, access, and capacity with San Juan County. One of the the areas of concern that needed to be addressed was or is a CTC in San Juan County needed, and if so, how feasible would that be? Now, since that time, there has been some positive movements with respect to behavioral health, the hiring of a behavioral health director, the opening of the MWRC, and now we're here today to hear a presentation on a CTC business plan for San Juan County. And with that, I will produce Kristin with RI International, and we will get into the presentation. Can I ask you some questions?
Hello. As Stephen said, my name is Kristin Ellis. I am a senior principal consultant with Recovery Innovations. Our DBA is RA International, so you're here both. I am here to present a minimized version of the entire report. That's a lengthy document, so it would take too much time today to go over the entire thing, but we'll be just going over the basic overview, and I guess you could call it the Spark Notes version. Like you said, next slide. They said this may or may not work, so. So just an overview for the County Commission as well as others present today. This is just an overview of the scope of the project that we completed with San Juan County. It was to create a Crisis Triage Center Business Plan and to determine how to best align future crisis practices within San Juan County to the practice standards in alignment with the SAMSSA National Guidelines for Behavioral Health Crisis Care. This included a pre-planning process, extensive community engagement, some assessment, analysis, draft report, a final business plan, which is in the hands of Stephen and his team, and then a presentation to all of you. Oh, it worked this time. Great. So just a little overview, what is a Crisis Triage Center? So a Crisis Triage Center would be a specialized psychiatric immediate short-term care facility that offers care twenty-four-seven on a walk-in basis, and this can be I come off the street and I'm asking for support. I'm referred by police officers. I'm referred by hospitals, my friend, my parent. Anybody can walk in and get the support, and this can also be received voluntarily and involuntarily. When a person does arrive at a Crisis Triage Center, they receive a rapid assessment and stabilization during the first part of their stay, and it's an incredibly better option than an emergency room department where a lot of people, you know, get psychiatrically boarded and wait hours or pun days to get actual care, sometimes sitting in a hallway or incarceration that may not even be necessary. They do get to meet with a multidisciplinary team, which can include a peer support specialist, a nurse, a psychiatric nurse practitioner, or psychiatrist, therapist. So that way, all the people that can support their crisis at hand are all in one spot. And then at the end, they are also able to get connection to ongoing care and services, and that can include outpatient and other kinds of services that may come up to help prevent future crises. So the goals of services are really to de-escalate the current crisis at hand, reduce unnecessary hospitalizations and incarcerations, and then provide individuals with the appropriate long-term support to hopefully prevent crises in the future, but always allowing them to come back if a crisis does come up again. So in a lot of our research, there's a clear need for a Crisis Triage Center in San Juan County for a variety of reasons. This is going to include the obvious. There are mental health and substance use issues in the county. Like many rural areas, San Juan County may face some difficulties in mental care, mental health care access and substance abuse problems, particularly given the opioid epidemic across the United States and especially here. There are also sometimes limited existing resources for folks to access, which is why it results in unnecessary hospitalizations and sometimes incarcerations, and that costs a lot more money to the county than maybe even just a Crisis Triage stay. You do also have a large Native American population, and they also come with some unique mental health challenges and may require culturally competent care that a jail and an ER may not be able to provide. And there are, like we've mentioned a couple times, this is a very rural nature of the county, which can make it difficult for residents to access the things in other counties or in larger cities. And so if you have a centralized Crisis Triage Center for folks that are in crisis, they may be willing to, you know, let's go get some help today when I'm not feeling so great or maybe having the worst day of my life versus, I don't know about you, I don't want to stay in an ER or jail if I'm not feeling so great. And one of my favorite things about Crisis Triage Centers is it reduces the potential strain on law enforcement. Law enforcement can drop them off. It doesn't require them to, you know, how long a booking process can take, or an ER may not take a person off their hands very quickly because they're like, no, they're already in your hands. Let's, they're safe with you. Whereas if a person comes to a Crisis Triage Center, we actually will, not we, but a Crisis Triage Center would take them off of the law enforcement's hands fairly quickly. This in our Peoria, from our experience as a provider of these services, in our Peoria, Arizona, location, it, law enforcement's actually responsible for eighty-five percent of our referrals because they could come in, say, hey, I've got Kristin. This is where I found her. This is what's going on with her. Have a nice day, and they get back on the streets to do what they wanted to do as a police officer to begin with. Back. Thank you. So I mentioned that this is significantly less expensive than doing your EDs in patients in jails. That left column you'll see shows that if you only have acute inpatient for involuntaries and emergency departments, it can cost San Juan County about twenty-eight point six million dollars a year for people that are in crisis. And then if you take a look at the right, which breaks it down into acute inpatient EDs as well, but includes the Crisis Triage levels of crisis chairs and short-term beds, which is what we'll get into in a little bit, and accessing mobile teams to take a little bit of the strain off law enforcement. It can reduce your costs all the way down to fourteen million, which allows you to then reinvest that money in other areas and allow people to get care instead of just, you know, taking them off the street when they're in a crisis or out of their homes. There we go. And if you decide to look at the entire report, you will see a full budget estimate for how much these things do cost because, you know, things cost. We anticipate if you were to approve the building of a Crisis Triage Center, that would have seven chairs, so that would allow folks to come in for about twenty-three hours and get triaged, get some support, often discharged with a continuous care after that. And then six beds, which is a step down from inpatient, but allows people to, you know what, Kristin's not going to be able to stabilize in twenty-three hours, but she needs maybe three to five days more. If you build a center with both of those, we anticipate it costing about three point five million. But primarily, if you look at that, that's just a screenshot. You'll see that two point three, almost two point four of it is just staffing. It takes a good staff. It takes a multidisciplinary staff to run this. However, it, you need that multidisciplinary staff for a person to receive the proper care when they are in a behavioral health crisis. Our budgets that we estimate also overestimate. We build in five percent for inflation. We build an indirect cost, so some of these things could fluctuate should the county decide to pursue this, whether you decide to pursue it in-house or you decide to pursue a provider through an RFP process. Those those costs may fluctuate as well, but we like to, if you look at the entire budget, you'll see, we like to overestimate and, you know, worst-case scenario because you'd rather us say it costs three point five and it costs three instead of say it costs two and it costs you three point five. So this is just an estimate based on current standards of occupancy salaries in your area. So obviously, those things will shift as time goes on. This is just a brief overview of what it looks like to have a staffing pattern and what goes into running a Crisis Triage Center. Like I mentioned, it's multidisciplinary. So those top section of folks, those are going to be your admin staff that are going to kind of help the program run, but they're not going to be doing a lot of direct care. The lower half is going to be direct care staff that are available to support the persons in crisis in your community. And it turns, and like I said, it has RNs and shift supervisors, which are master's level clinicians, peer support specialists, and all of the people that come with that. So that way, the folks are served by every single, every type of care that will benefit them. This is where, this is yours, this is all y'all's favorite slide right here. How do we pay for it? So if you decide to pursue a chairs only with no beds, you'll notice the line two is a really large gap funding. Unfortunately, the state of New Mexico doesn't have a ton of great reimbursement rates currently. So there is no break even on either without gap funding unless Medicaid rates increase and the county decides to pursue potential contracts with MCOs. Because although we wish the MCOs would pay for these services, and you know there's parity laws in place, they don't like to. But if you pursue contracts with these MCOs, you might actually be able to get some recoup on that money and then, but if you then pursue the chairs and beds option, which is that lower option, it doesn't cost too much more, but you can recoup a lot more money, and it requires a lot less gap funding. And so the gap funding obviously would either have to come from any state grants that are available, any tax levies, any additional ways that you pursue that money, or it could be, hey, I saved money in this area. I can reallocate it to this service. So it would just depend on how the county would want to pursue that. There we go. So pursuing a Crisis Triage Center has several phases. You're going to see a startup phase, which is the first three to six months prior to opening. There's no revenue produced during this time because that's your hiring, your training, your licensing, your marketing, you're deciding on a space, you're buying furniture. So you can't bill for that. So that would be time that you would have to prepare for as well. The ramp-up period is what we like to see is your first one to eight months of being open. You won't be seeing your full normal revenue during those months either because that's when folks are going to be like, this place is open? Are you sure? How does it work? You're still doing a lot of marketing. A lot of stakeholder engagement continues to keep that, all your relationships building. So that way, your community knows they can access it, and that way, your partners know they can access it. And with a well-oiled machine and running program, we always anticipate that about nine month, nine month, month nine or ten on is when you start to see your regular about eighty-five percent occupancy a little more predictable on your revenue. So you're looking at, if you have three to six months of startup and one to eight months of ramp-up, that's a good, you know, ten to fourteen months that you have to plan for, that the revenue won't be as consistent until it continues to move on. And that's pretty typical of any, any Crisis Triage Center when you're building them up is it takes time to build them and then, of course, to get your systems in place, and then they, and then they run pretty well. So like I've mentioned, some expectations of a Crisis Triage Center is reimbursement rates at the state level do need to be sustainable or other funding is required. And an engaged law enforcement will help you have consistent referral sources. Like I said, in Peoria, it's eighty-five percent of our referrals. When I was running programs in Riverside County, California, law enforcement was responsible for about seventy percent of our referrals because they knew if they walked in, they could get a bottle of water, they could get a snack. They could say, hey, Kristin, this is, this is Wayne. Sorry, I'm picking on Wayne. But, and he's here for this, and they knew it was a good relationship, and it was better for them and better for the person that was in their car. You also need to keep your community engaged for utilization. If you have poor experiences, people aren't going to refer to it. And so if you have poor experiences, if you decide to run it as a county or if you decide to have a provider run it, you want to make sure that those people are open and engaged with the community so we, you know, you work out the kinks as it goes along. And then having a funder and provider collaborative relationship. So if you decide to pursue a provider through an RFP process, you want to make sure that you as the funder and the provider have an ongoing collaborative relationship. It's not just we tell you what to do and you do it. It has to be, we work together to make this work. And I think that's where some Crisis Triage Centers don't fan out, and it's reimbursement rates would be the number one reason is it's not sustainable financially, and the county doesn't plan ahead for the gap funding. But the other hand is if you have a provider and the counties don't want to work with them or, hey, we ran into this issue. Okay, it's your problem. You're the provider. You want to make sure that it's a continuous relationship because ultimately, the only people that are getting hurt are your community if you don't all work together. Some additional recommendations that you would see in the very lengthy report is that we would hope that you would establish some performance expectations and metrics or KPIs for each component of a crisis response system and the data systems to collect and analyze information necessary to manage and to make, you know, changes to take a look at, okay, how is this going? Build it into your contracts with your provider should you decide to go that route. So that way, it's, hey, we expect you to meet these KPIs by this month, and if they don't, like, work together on how to achieve those goals because, again, we want this, we don't want this to open and then close. Should you decide to open one, you want it to open and be sustainable and have the people that are running the services have something to shoot for. And for obvious reasons, besides just gap funding is less required, we definitely, as the consulting group, recommended that you do pursue an operating system with recliners and beds because it is allowable under New Mexico's Crisis Triage License Standards because the addition of beds not only allows you to reduce how much gap funding you would have to come up with, but it also allows you to serve the roughly thirty percent of folks that are going to enter your initial Triage Center that may need additional time. Instead of going, oh, it's twenty-three hours. What do we do? We can just transition them to the other level of care. That is my presentation, and I am now open to any questions you may have. And Stephen, you join me, I bet.
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
Hi, Terry. Hi. So thank you for coming and presenting today, and I've reviewed this, and I've talked to Dr. Lindstrom and to Stephen and to Megan, and I, I think that it's wonderful what we're doing here. It's a great opportunity. It's been needed for a long time. So I get, you mentioned about voluntary versus involuntary. So for twenty-three hours, you can involuntary commit them?
Yes.
So not seventy-two hours. Doesn't have to be seventy-two hours.
Correct. So most laws around seventy-two hours is that a person has to be not analyzed, but seen within seventy-two hours. No, most seventy-two hour laws are just related to, I can't have Kristin sitting for longer than seventy-two before it being evaluated.
Right.
So, yeah, you can have somebody there.
Okay, you can. And this is for non-violent offenders?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. And so safety is number one.
Of course.
With staffing.
Of course.
And then I appreciate the phases of implementation because I think it's really important to know that that first year of startup is going to be a whole different thing than once it's in operation.
For sure.
And so that's when we'll have to call on all of our partners within San Juan County and outside of the county with the Navajo Nation as well because we want to have a good relationship. One thing that I find very important is marketing.
Yes.
That has to be done from the beginning on to really make sure that people know where to go.
Yep.
And you mentioned that what was going to be the number that you have to have to be sustainable for that period of time of people coming in?
Yes. Oh, I don't have that offhand. I didn't write that down.
Okay, because I understand that one facility had to be at least seven to two.
Yeah, I think it was somewhere between six and seven admissions a day, if I remember off the top of my head, but I can confirm that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then as far as staffing, you look within San Juan County? As far as you have a, who does your staffing? How's that done?
What are we recommending or what do we typically do when we're a provider?
Typically, what did, what did you do in Peoria?
In Peoria, we have folks that primarily lived in Maricopa County that worked at the facility, but there were also external counties because people don't mind the drive because they want to do the work.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And then how, how, even though Arizona is different than New Mexico, how did Peoria go about funding this project?
Gosh, that opened in nineteen ninety.
Okay.
So I'm not.
So it's been around a long time.
It's been around a long time. That was, that was the first Crisis Triage Center for Recovery Innovations back then, and it was actually Metta Services Way back then. And so I think, I mean, it was a very different time, and the state of Arizona and the state of Georgia actually have pretty robust crisis reimbursement things. And so I think it built with the state, and I think that might be something that may happen here, too.
So there's opportunity, opportunity for us to learn how they got funding as far as how we can do that as well.
Definitely.
And then, so right now, we already have collaboration with the Sovereign Center GIP in emergency facilities. So we, we collaborate in San Juan County very well. So we want to make sure that we continue to collaborate and everybody's part of the, the conversation as well. So you mentioned a model with seven chairs and then one with six beds as well. And that was.
Those would both be in the same facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
But you can do it in a staged and phased approach where you start with just those, the chairs to have it be like your psychiatric emergency room essentially. to have it be like your psychiatric emergency room essentially, and then add the beds hopefully shortly after because you need a back door for folks that may not stabilize in those 23 hours. You want to make sure that there's a back door for those people to.
Okay, so that's part of the collaboration that's developed within the system.
Yes.
And you also said that open, engaged relationship, that's huge in what we do here, especially in mental health and any services. Uh huh, that we really have that trust and rapport with each other.
That's good.
So, so I think that's pretty much all that I have written down. But thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
I'm excited to see this.
I'm excited to see what happens.
Mr. Chair. You have a staff 24/7, then, but then you have 20, 23 hour CTCs.
Yes.
What happens to the other?
Oh. So most, most areas had their front and their front door, which is your crisis triage chairs. You keep people for 23 hours and 59 minutes because most reimbursement strategies, well, once a person hits 24 hours, it's considered inpatient and not billable under that code. So it's, it's just that the person is staying about 23 hours, not, but the facility is still open 24/7.
Okay. In your information analysis, you miss, you mentioned a high Native American population. And in your appendices, are there any crisis triage centers that Native Americans are already doing or that you're aware? Because it's not listed anywhere.
So I know SAMSA is currently working with tribes to build out kind of, kind of like how they have the national guidelines just for general care and they have national guidelines for kids now, too. I know that they are working to hopefully build out some strategies to, it's hard to have a blanket strategy for the entire nation because there are so many tribes. But they are working on having the people with the voice at the table to have some influence.
Are there Native American triage, crisis triage?
Not specifically, no, no. Because the idea is that you would serve anybody. I know that it may be harder to reach some folks that they're, if they're kind of attached to their community until they understand what it entails, but these facilities would be serving anybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
With, I guess with Native American population and maybe other ethnic groups, is there a recommendation in there that maybe the, the workers that are hired should be maybe bilingual tribe?
Yeah, you would definitely want your staff, when possible, to be able to represent the people you're serving.
Okay.
Yeah. As much as possible. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, within the report, you will find a section on who to hire. There is a section in terms of adding that diversity to match the clientele. So that's part of the hiring strategy that ROI identified.
Yeah. It's a long report. Oh, you have a pretty bound version.
I, I like the statistics in the book.
I do.
You know how we rate nationally?
Yes.
As a state and, you know, the county, that was very good information.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair. Kristin, thank you.
Hi, Steve.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
I feel like we've been working on this for at least two years now. So it's nice to see it come this far.
I know.
And, and get, I still have a question about transportation and this one might be more for Stephen. What kind of transportation are we going to offer folks that aren't able to get there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that's a very good question. And the report doesn't necessarily identify what type of transport per se. It did talk about some best practices in terms of crisis teams. However, you know, that's, that's a gap area that we still need to work through. County's very large. If you have a situation up in Blanco and somebody is not able to, to get to, let's say if the facility was in Farmington, that's going to be an area of concern. Of course, a lot of the transportation that occurs right now is law enforcement. And so, you know, that, those are going to be the two options. One is self-approf, one is involuntarily. But that is an area of concern that has to be closed in terms of.
Right. And my other question was, I understand the officers, you know, they'll be doing part of the transportation. So are they going to be trained in the evaluation on who is violent, who's not? Is that something they already are trained in? Or I, I would just hate for a violent person to, to end up inside and then, then get violent.
Mr. Mr. Chair, Commissioner, law enforcement respond as they normally respond to try to de-escalate that situation. They're going to, they're going to use their training as best fit. I know there has been behavioral health training that currently occurs with the academy as it exists today. So that will be utilized. But there's going to be no additional training. Their, their duties will be to try to get that individual to the CTC and from the CTC, there's a warrant handoff. They don't have to wait around and then they can go about their business.
Yeah. And if an officer does determine that somebody, you know, they get to decide if a person's mental health crisis is at hand or if they've committed a crime or that might be violent, like then they get to make that decision. There are a lot of counties that do have their officers engage in CIT, in the CIT program, which helps them kind of gauge what's best and which, which route to go. So that might be something to do as well.
Right. And then my last question before my last question.
Uh huh.
Um, so when the, when the person comes in, they do an evaluation right away? And is that when you decide whether it becomes a bed or a chair?
It typically, so let's go back to my, my days of doing this, the services. So when you do evaluate somebody, sometimes you're not sure yet. You might, you know what, let's give Kristin some time. It might be her acute crisis she just needed to be removed from and she'll be okay once she has a minute to be with new people that are happy and welcoming and willing to listen to her. But it may also be, oof, Kristin's definitely not going to stabilize in 23 hours. So we might transition her to the other level of care long before that. So it could be immediate and it could be in the later stages of their initial stay. It just kind of depends on what the staff sees. If whatever I'm presenting with and however I'm responding to the staff, because if I'm responding to staff well in the crisis triage center, let's keep me there and see what happens if we have to transition. Or, oh no, Kristin's going to be here a little bit, let's transition her immediately.
And then my very last question, I promise.
Before your last one.
So the marketing?
Yes.
Is it kind of equal? Are you marketing to, say, the Navajo Nation, the public and the officers? Because obviously the officers are going to have to know about it.
Yeah.
Do we, do we have something set up for each police department? I see Bloomfield Aztec, the sheriff's department is here.
Yeah, I would definitely, as part of your marketing process, I would make sure you cover everybody fairly equally and then you're going to know who's going to need a little more attention as you go along. One thing that we have seen pretty successful is sending somebody to the morning and afternoon roll calls for your officers or any CIT trainings. Did you have those? As well as having the town halls and the stakeholders and some of the things we kind of did as part of our process, but continuing those conversations so people know, hey, this is the status of it. Hey, it's opening now or it's opening in six months. So people know this is what's to expect, what is to be expected. But you want to continue to engage everybody and then you'll kind of notice, all right, this group already understands it, we can engage them once a quarter. This group may need continuous reminders of what this service is about.
Hi, great.
Yeah, no problem.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
I have another one.
Yes.
So a person has an episode and it's a crisis.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess they get the, the help and the, it calms them down. And do you give them strategies? And then later on, I guess it says community support. Is that the preventive part or?
Yeah, so they would either have preventive care or they would be connected to outpatient services or a therapist, really depending on if they're connected to county services or if they have their private insurance. The staff should be able to support them in navigating the next steps, but then also letting them know if a new crisis comes up, like we're still here for you to come back.
And then the person going through the episode, if they have insurance, that would cover that?
That, if you remember in the revenue slide, I, let me go back really fast. If it'll go back. Can you go to my revenue slide, please? Back a little couple more, one more, one more. That one, okay. I had mentioned that although we would hope that private insurance and MCOs would pay for this service, a lot of them don't without specified contracts. So that would be something that the county would want to pursue is take a general look at what kind of insurances your private insurance community members have and see who you can get into contract with. They are really tough, though. Not everybody wants to do that. And so that's why the gap funding tends to be so much is because you're only getting reimbursed through Medicaid for episodic things that they'll pay for. But then also private insurance doesn't always want to, doesn't always want to do that.
I was thinking, okay, I, I lose my job, my husband leaves me.
Oh, my gosh.
My kids are all at my, my relatives' place and so I'm a mess.
Yeah.
And my insurance is gone.
Yeah.
I have no money and I'm, I'm maybe sleeping over at a good friend's house. So I just thought, everything costs money.
It does.
But we would have something that would cover, I guess, Medicaid or whatever to try to help them.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of, some counties across the country will have particular funds set aside for these services for their unhoused or uninsured folks. Because, you know, Medicaid and MCOs aren't going to pay for me if I don't exist in their system. So some counties would decide to set aside some money for that specifically. Yeah.
Any other questions? Well, I, I want to thank you. I know this was no small undertaking. And in, in looking at everybody who was involved, I see a lot of their faces out here. So I want to thank all of our community members, department heads, those that were involved in, in doing this. It just shows some of the collaboration that we have here in San Juan County.
Definitely.
Thank you for being here at the, at the meeting. And, and I'm sure if you have any follow-up questions or, or anything like that, I'm, I'm sure we can, we can get those taken care of.
Yes. Same to all of you.
I didn't dare open it up to questions.
Oh, no.
Because I want to get home before midnight.
I agree.
But thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it. And we look forward to the.
To your novel.
Next steps and, and how we get there.
Absolutely, I'm looking forward to it as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number two, which is consideration of a space usage agreement and license between PMS and San Juan County. Stephen Seder.
Mr. Chair, County Commission, come before you for consideration of a space usage and licensing agreement between Presbyterian Medical Services and San Juan County, sometimes often referred to as a lease agreement. San Juan County has been in communication with Presbyterian Medical Services on next steps in the future to house the Mental Wellness Resource Center. Currently, the MWRC is located at a facility near the hospital with a very gracious lease from San Juan Regional Medical Center. That lease is set to expire in October of 2025. And so San Juan County is proactively looking at a new location so that we don't run into a situation where we don't have a home to occupy for MWRC. PMS has been gracious to offer a facility free of charge, which will include janitorial services and some other amenities at no cost to the county. And this lease agreement will commence on January of 2025. Likely, we will not move into about mid-January as we are moving through different situations and setting up and so forth. But with that, I will stand for questions. And Ms. Jill is in the audience for additional questions as well.
So I, I see the address. Can you describe where it's at?
Yeah.
Is it at their main campus?
It is at their main campus. It is off Broadway. You know, one thing that I, I should highlight is that what is advantageous about this location is that it is next to Presbyterian. So it will allow for a nice handoff should we need services from PMS at close proximity. There is also Red Apple Bus Transit. So what we noticed with MWRC clients is if we, we make connections, we want to make sure that those connections and those referrals get seen in a timely manner. So now we'll have the ability to walk across the hall and amongst the PMS if they are the provider that's appropriate. And that will reduce that gap to make sure that those clients are seeing the appropriate people in that timely fashion. Now, the one trade-off we do have is, of course, near the hospital, having those individuals come through is not going to be as close in terms of proximity. But hopefully with the Red Apple Transit being right next to us, we'll be able to have other opportunities to get clients to and from wherever they need to go.
Go ahead. So Stephen, thank you, and Jill, thank you so much. So this has been a work in progress and this is a big deal. So I'm very appreciative of what the hospital did by providing us with the space. I was on the hospital board when we were around looking at those spaces. So again, I just want to make that public that we really appreciate what they did. And now that you've stepped up to help us out because there's a lot of dynamics to get this going. So it's a great space and a really a great opportunity with what services you have and what we need to address. So, so anyway, I don't really have any questions, but thank you again. Thank you, Stephen.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to comment that I hear all these good things about PMS's generosity and kindness to people in the community. And then that this MOU that we're going to have where we don't have to pay, with even though the utilities are high and then to maintain a, a building. I mean, I commend PMS for that. So thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more. So now that, talking a lot today, I don't know why. But anyway, a lot of questions, a lot of good things happening. But as far as people coming from the ER or in that area, that a lot of times they could walk them across the street, are we going to have signage to be able to facilitate that transition as well?
So yes, we did talk about some signage. So we would definitely, and we have some way signs that are outside. So it's already where it talks about one way goes to medical and Tricor Labs. To the other direction is for behavioral health. So we would be adding on to that sign, which is outside, as well as up on the very top. We can also state, you know, the name of the program out there. Then coming into the facility, then there will also be signage to, in order to guide them, they could walk in and then go straight down to the, into that hall.
Okay, all right. And then that's good, I appreciate that. What about where the center is now? How are we going to let people know that where it's going to be in January?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fortner, that, that is a good question. I think what we're going to have to do is make sure, continue coordination with the hospital. Let them know that we'll be prepping to move and that if we could have some type of advertisement in the meantime to direct them to the new location, I think that would be appropriate. Ultimately, I believe the hospital has other plans and so that will be a limited timeframe to try to get the message across.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I think this shows that the Mental Health Wellness Resource Center has, has been a success that others in the community see a need for it and are, are willing to help us out with it. So we appreciate that. I'll stand for a motion. I think the motion needs to indicate that it, that we authorize Mr. Stark to enter into and execute the lease is, is all I think we need.
I'll make that motion. As said, a space usage agreement and license between Presbyterian Medical Services and San Juan County.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume it passed unanimously. Thank you. Seal of applause. Brings us to item number three, which is consideration of administrative office of the court's grant application for the Aztec District Court parking lot project. Judge Gurley.
Good afternoon. Commissioner, Chairman, Staff. I always have the microphone in front of me. And I just, before I talk about what's on the agenda, I just wanted to say a couple of things about the cooperation with the county and the courts. I listened to the mental health, I got in here a little bit late, but listened to the mental health facility. As Mike knows and I think Commissioner Fortner knows for sure, the, we have a mental health in the court program that started several years ago. We had some start and stops because of COVID. But it's going pretty strong. And actually, the, this center was one of the first goals that we've listed with the mental health in the courts. The special session that was, however many hours long, only did two things. But one of the things that the special session did was, was appropriate $3 million to the courts, to the judiciary for mental health issues. Now, it's more targeted for, for counties that are way behind us. But we have, we have, uh, I think we're gonna have the opportunity to take advantage of some of that funding for some of these projects. So the money that will be saved by the citizens of the county, plus the help they'll get, but the, the people that need the help, but the taxpayers, by having somebody be able to go to this facility instead of going to the hospital for a hold and maybe a civil commitment, or going to the jail, which is what happens most of the time, uh, and having the, the daily cost at the jail. So that's very exciting stuff, so I'm, I'm glad to see that going on. Um, I, I wanna talk a little bit about getting to see Tanya every election cycle. Uh, we get to count ballots and, and keep keys and do all that fun stuff. And people don't realize how much the courts and the county have to do with each other. It's, it's more behind the scenes, thank goodness, than it is out in front. But, but there's a lot of things that go on, and, and that's just, that's just one of them. The detention center works with the courts, uh, that. I know I've talked to you all before in the past and in the last few years, uh, when I've spoken about how unusual it is or unique it is to have the cooperation that, between the governmental entities here, not just the courts and the county, but the cities as well. And it's not that way everywhere. Um, the detention centers are a constant source of struggle between the courts, uh, and detention centers all over the state. Even in, even, even in neighboring counties, shall I say. And what we have here is important, and again, it's efficient. Uh, everybody has the same goal, which is to do justice. And a lot of times people don't understand what justice means, but that's what we're trying to do every day, is justice. And we couldn't do it without the detention center and the folks over there. And the last thing, uh, that I wanted to talk about, uh, was, uh, the expansion at the courthouse where I think we, you've gotten updates on knowing what's going on. But that's an example of, of really a taxpayer's being able to double their money. As you all know, the Constitution requires the counties to provide court facilities. Uh, we had a recent thing with you that was not the way we wanted to do it. It was not, uh, there was no time, there was nothing. The legislature towards the end of a session said, here's, uh, I think it was $20 million to the courts. Uh, the courts, the AOC didn't do much for some period of time. And then they put out short deadlines and said, we're gonna match funds if, if you can do it. Uh, and we were lucky enough to have a county that was, that was responsive and, and open. And we, we're gonna be able to add, uh, space by squaring off the building, as you, as you know. That leads me to the, the last thing, which is what Jody's gonna talk to you about today, which is the, with the parking lot, there's some money left over from that. And of course, with, the reason we expanded the building, as you all know, is because of people. For whatever reason, we're, we are often asked to pilot projects or programs for different things that end up getting pushed out to the rest of the state. Because of that, we have, I, I don't even know how many employees we have that are in court programs and pre-trial services. You, you folk proportion money to us every year for the GPS monitors, for example. Um, again, keeping people out of jail, um, sa- saving money. Um, but, but those people have to have someplace to park, and that's, that's what, that's what this parking lot piece is about. So when, I'll let, as always, the person that really knows what she's talking about, visit with you. But, um, appreciate everything that you do, uh, with the courts. My time as, uh, as chief, uh, ended in May. Um, I, I'm sure I'll still be here doing things, but we have our first chief from McKinley County now, uh, for the district. This district's McKinley County and this county. So appreciate all the time and consideration you gave me during my time as, as chief. So thank you.
Thank you, Judge Gurley. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commission members, my name is Jody Schwabell. I come to you today as the CEO of the 11th Judicial District. That includes San Juan County and McKinley County. Obviously, today we're talking about San Juan County. And I'm here today to ask for the, the commission's, uh, consideration on, uh, pairing with the district court to apply for another matching fund. We call it a grant, for lack of a better word. As Judge Gurley mentioned, uh, last year, y'all were very kind and off, and worked very quickly with us because we weren't given a lot of time last year. This year, it actually was the same thing. And, uh, my, Mr. Stark and I worked very closely together and decided that we would not come to you in a rush this time. And, uh, I think it was a very good decision. The, uh, AOC, um, let me back up a moment so you can see what I'm talking about. So what I, what you have in front of you, not only is the, um, uh, estimate for the parking lot that will expand our parking lot so that we'll be able to park people that we have added or, or coming on board with the expansion. I've also included the memo from AOC. So you can now see all the steps that we have to go through in order to apply for this. Again, I'll just call it a grant in courts. Please disregard the, uh, the submission deadline of June. Again, Mr. Stark and I decided, rather than come rushing to you, that we would wait. Even if we had to wait another cycle, I have to tell you, I suspected that we would have, AOC would have money left over. Sure enough, uh, they are going to ask for another submission. I'm gonna guess, uh, Judge Gurley, in the fall, they haven't told us yet. But my, my best guess is they will come back to the courts in the fall, to the districts, and they will ask for a second round of applications. That's why I'm here before you today, so we can go through this in a logical, in a calm manner, rather than how we had to do it last year. One of the things that you will see that I've provided is highlighted in yellow. And these are the steps that we have to go through as, as a team in order to qualify for these funds. This is, this is something I'm, I'm very pleased to, to go through with you very quickly. Um, you will see under number one, we have to provide documents that identify the project. That's done. Number two, we have to, uh, provide or verify that the total cost of the project will not exceed $1 million. Done. Come before you for the county's support of the project and that the county has identified funds to cover at least 50% of the total cost of the project. To be done. And that's why I'm here today. The project is to plan, design, and construct district court improvements. Done. The county will execute, um, intergovernmental agreement, uh, with AOC. Of course, that's not to happen until the, the, the very end of this process and the beginning of, uh, the construction process. And then, of course, to verify by signature of the chief district judge that the court supports the need. That brings me to our, our new chief, uh, judge for the 11th. As Judge Gurley mentioned, his term has now ended. Uh, our David Peterson is our new chief. He is a district court judge in Gallup, and he does send his regrets. He had an unavoidable conflict, could not be here today, but asked me to send his apologies and, um, hopes that he will be able to be in front of you at some point in time. As Judge Gurley pointed out, I believe you did, he's our first, our first chief out of McKinley County in the history of our district.
And he supports the project?
He does. Yes, sir. He does, uh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, yes, he does. Um, the documents also include a pledge from the chief judge and Mr. Stark that the funds granted will be expended by June 2028 at the latest, to be done. So of everything that's listed on here, we have three things to accomplish in order to apply for these funds. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
So this is the parking lot, the, uh, the employee and secured parking on the, the other side of the courthouse, is that?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. It is to expand the secured parking to push north towards the highway.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request to apply for a district court project's grant.
I'll second it.
Having been moved and seconded, uh, I, I had one other question. We have the money that, it says that we have to have the money that's, uh, available. We, we can earmark and have $100,000.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Uh, and that was the ask from the 11th Judicial District, was $100,000 towards the estimated $201,000 parking lot project. We have that available in our capital reserve.
Perfect.
Account.
Any other questions, discussion before we move to a vote? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. I presume it passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, for your time.
Which brings us to, uh, item, I guess I should be marking these off so I know. Item number four, uh, consideration of First Amendment Memorandum of Understanding 157 between San Juan County and Navajo Nation for Transportation Projects. Mr. Perel.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, in 2019, San Juan County and the Navajo Nation, through its department or division of transportation, entered into an MOU establishing the framework, terms, and conditions by which, uh, San Juan County and Navajo Nation could jointly develop and prioritize transportation projects. Uh, that MOU does not obligate any funds to any specific projects. Uh, those would, um, those projects would be identified in collaboration between myself and the Division Director of the Navajo Division of Transportation, and then brought to you for, for subsequent approval. Similarly, brought to, um, the, the tribe for, for their approval as well, um, only following which funds would be obligated to a project. Uh, that agreement, um, originally executed in 2019 is set to expire August 20th of this year. Uh, the amendment before you, uh, adds a, uh, a new paragraph, um, basically extending that, the term of that agreement for an additional five years from August 20th of, of this year. Um, so no changes to the, the terms of the MOU. Uh, we, we did have a meeting with, with folks from Navajo Division of Transportation just two weeks ago. Uh, obviously, they, they wouldn't be the signers of this agreement, but they, they did see the benefit of, of the continuation of this MOU to, again, develop transportation infrastructure for the benefits, benefit of citizens of San Juan County, whether those people live on or off, um, the reservation. Um, so with that said, I, I would stand for any questions, um, and request your signature on the MOU amendment.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, um, does this mean, like, um, sometimes I see there's a lot of federal monies, but it's specifically for tribes? And I guess you will be able to work with Navajo Nation DOT and obtain these fundings? And we keep our people working?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totino, I, the terms of, uh, what the nation could use their money for would obviously still hold true. Um, whether or not they could be used on a, a collaborative project would likely depend on what the project is. If it's, if it's within the bounds, uh, of the reservation or, you know, the, the checkboard area, which is comprised of allotment lands or, or tribal, tribal fee lands. Um, so I can't speak directly as, as to whether or not tribal-specific funding could be used, um, through these agreements. But I, but I suspect it has been in the past.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm glad that the collaboration will be there, cause, um, I always think that they never come to us and say, you know, let's help us with this grant or whatever, and let's work it to, together. So this really opens up that door. So that's good.
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Totino, um, so the, in the last five years, I will say, uh, nothing was executed under the, the current MOU. And I, and I think, to some degree, that was largely influenced by, if you look at the two to three years in the middle of that term, tribal offices were largely, uh, hampered by COVID restrictions. Uh, prior to, to this, however, um, there was an MOU in place, um, which, when I started working here at the county in 2016, we did execute three projects, um, in collaboration with the tribe. Those were largely maintenance projects, um, on, on tribal roads. You know, the conversation we had with, uh, Navajo Division of Transportation recently was, let's try to think a little bit bigger, uh, on some larger infrastructure projects, that couldn't otherwise reasonably be accomplished if we were to try to do them independently. So, um, big picture road improvements, big picture bridge improvements. Not looking to, again, mutual bene, projects with mutual benefit, not small-scale maintenance projects. So.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I would, uh, make a motion that we enter into the, this memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the Navajo Nation Number 157 between the San Juan County and Navajo Nation for Transportation Projects.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition. I presume it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perel. Brings us to item number five, which is consideration of adoption of amended and restated San Juan County Ordinance Number 95, the Business Registration Ordinance. Mr. Sawyer.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, Commissioners and staff recommended updates and changes to the Business Registration Ordinance, which was adopted by the commission in 2016. Uh, those proposed changes include, uh, number one, that cannabis-related businesses are exempted from business registration because they are already licensed by the state. They would still need a permit from the county, uh, but, um, but they don't need to register the businesses because they're already licensed. Number two, uh, reference to agricultural businesses is removed to reflect, reflect the exemption under state statute for gross receipts from agricultural businesses. Um, number three, an inspection by San Juan County Fire and Rescue is not required if the business is not open to the general public or has no employees on the premises. And number four, uh, it, it made, uh, changes to, there were references to the combined reporting system, the CRS number. Those were changed to, uh, Business Tax Identification Number, the BTIN number. A notice of intent to amend and restate ordinance number 95 was approved at the July 2nd meeting and published in the Tri-City Record on July 5th, 2025. So staff would, uh, request that, uh, the commission, uh, adopt amended and restated San Juan County Ordinance Number 95.
And do we need to have a hearing or anything on this?
Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners, I, I, I actually researched that issue before our meeting, and there's no requirement in state statute for a public hearing for this, but you can if you'd like.
Mr. Chair, did we get any feedback?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lanier, we did not.
Mr. Chair, I knew that we adopt the amended and restated San Juan County Ordinance Number 95 Business Registration Ordinance. Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any. I presume that it passed unanimously. Brings us to item number six, which is consideration of adoption of San Juan County Ordinance Number 127, uh, the Nuisance Abatement Ordinance. Mr. Sawyer.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, New Mexico Statute, uh, Sections 3-18-5 and 4-37-1 allow cities and counties to deal with hazardous properties. These statutes give them the power to remove ruined, damaged, or dilapidated structures and ruins, uh, rubbish and debris on the premises. Um, although this power exists under state statute, many cities such as Farmington and Aztec, to name a few, and, uh, counties such as McKinley, Doñana, um, and Chavas County have enacted ordinances that mirror the statute. Uh, county staff comes before you today to request that the county commission adopt ordinance number 127. The proposed ordinance is almost an exact copy of the statute, but adds Section 3E, which requires county staff to seek voluntary compliance before seek, seeking a resolution to clean up properties. And so this is the way the statute and the ordinance work. Uh, number one, uh, hazardous property that contains ruined, damaged, or dilapidated property, uh, comes to the staff's attention, county staff's attention. Um, and it, by the way, it's intended, um, at least by staff, that this would be used very, um, rarely. It, it's, it would be just when there's a, a hazardous property that's really posing a, a problem. So the county, once it came to the county staff's, uh, attention, then county staff would investigate. Um, then county staff would seek voluntary cleanup, uh, of the nuisance. Um, if cleanup isn't accomplished, then county staff will come before the commission and seek a resolution. and seek a resolution that the premises constitutes a menace, and the ruined, damaged, or dilapidated building or garbage and debris should be removed based on evidence gathered by county staff. If the Commission were to agree, then it would issue a resolution requiring the owner to clean up the property. The owner of the or occupant of the property shall be served with the resolution and then have 10 days to object and ask for a hearing in front of the County Commission. The County Commission would then conduct a hearing and either uphold or rescind the resolution based on its findings from that hearing. And then the property owner or occupant would then have the right to appeal. If the county decided to uphold the the resolution, the the property owner or occupant could appeal to the District Court. Now, if there is no objection or if the resolution is upheld by the Commission and/or the District Court, then the owner must clean up the property and/or the county can do so. If the county were to clean up the property, the cost of abatement will constitute a lien against the property. A Notice of Intent to Adopt Ordinance Number 127 was approved at the July 2nd meeting and was published in the Tri-City Record on Friday, July 5th, 2024. Staff requests the Board to adopt Ordinance Number 127. And the commit, well, and then the Commission has the option of conducting a public public hearing, but it's not required by statute.
So this is the prime example of a house that burnt down or a trailer that's been burnt that I've driven by for the last six years that that just sits in the same same condition?
Mr. Chairman, yes, that's that's correct. And and often the the problem is that the the owner can't be located or is deceased. And this would be a way that that I saw in that that hazardous property just doesn't just sit there. We have a lot of problems with squatters. And then there's a danger from actually inhabiting that building. There'll be people who move in. So that's what that does.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Sawyer, can you explain then about what happens with the is that unincorporated municipality or the Navajo Nation?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totacini, yes. This ordinance would only be in effect in the unincorporated areas of the county, so it wouldn't be in effect in the cities or on the Navajo Nation, just only in all the other areas. Yes. And the city, the city of Farmington and the city of Aztec already have similar ordinances, and then Bloomfield has the statute available to it. So and this is actually already available to us. We're just putting in additional requirements that the county work with the property owner to try to bring it into compliance first.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the San Juan County Ordinance Number 127, the Nuisance Abatement Ordinance.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume that it passed unanimously. Brings us to item number seven, which is consideration of temporary of a temporary use agreement, natural gas transmission easement and purchase agreement for grant of a natural gas line easement. Joe Sawyer.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, New Mexico Gas Company is designing and constructing the San Juan County Industrial Park Main Line Extension Project fleet of funding. This project will provide an extension to existing gas distribution facilities in the area that will service both private and public interest. The project requires the acquisition of real property from the county and a an easement to construct the gas line, and we will be rece, the county would be receiving $1,500 for temporary staging area in the property that it would be selling to the Mexico Gas Company for the project.
There any questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Sawyer, does any of this go through any of that property of people? Are they okay with it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Totacini, this is only on county property.
Oh, only on?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I move that we agree to the temporary use agreement, natural gas transmission easement purchase and purchase agreement for grant of natural gas line easement.
Oh, second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Presume that it, not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously. And can you tell us how many shells were sold at the seashore by Sally?
That's that's what that title felt like.
Right.
Brings us to item number eight, which is Resolution Number 242515, fiscal year 2025, final budget adoption, the finish line.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm bringing to you today the FY25 Final Budget for your consideration for approval. The final budget must be submitted by to DFA by July 31st of 2024. DFA has until September 6th to get that final budget approved and back to us. But typically, historically, they've approved it mid mid-August timeframe. Within this final budget that I'm bringing before you, the total revenues are $141,277,904. The total expenditures is $185,916,500. Of that, of the total expenditures between the interim and the final budget was an increase of $9.6 million. A majority of that increase is from PO carryovers and for grant projects. In your packet, there is a interim to final presentation schedule of changes, so you can kind of look at that and see where all of the dollars are flowing through. As far as the revenues go, our revenues, San Juan County is very, very fortunate to have, GRT is our primary revenue source. However, coming into a close second is our intergovernmental grants fund, which a majority of is funding a lot of our capital projects that we're trying to complete, which is also putting us in a good position to be able to continue to build our reserves so that we can become debt-free by 2037. We do have a NMFA loan that will be ending at the end of FY25. We have another one that'll be ending in 2027, and then the GRT revenue bonds will be ending in 2037. So we are on track to meeting that goal, and we do have we're working with our 30-year capital plan to make sure that we're staying on track with that as well. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
I've asked all of my questions.
So it's a good thing I'm elapsed, right?
What's up with the last?
Asked.
I've asked him from you all all year.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move for the approval of Resolution Number 24-25-15, fiscal year 2025, final budget adoption. Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not, not, did you have something?
No, no.
Not hearing any, those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, I presume that it passes, it passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Q.
All right, brings us to item number nine, which I'm going to put a prohibition or restriction on Commissioner Lanier for making any comments on. It's, oh, yes, my favorite one. The report of on inspection of Detention Center, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is just a reminder for everybody except Commissioner Lanier that it's time to do the inspection of jails, which is required by Section 33-3-4, which which states that the governing body shall conduct an annual site visit to inspect the overall conditions at the detention facility and present an inspection report to the governing body. So this is just the reminder.
My argument would be that since it was last submitted August 15th, that all inspections have to be done after August 15th. You can go back out there and re-inspect. No, and I think that was just information only, Commissioners. We need to have at least three of us make it out there, so schedule that, especially if you're interested in how things are going at the at the Detention Center now. All right, so brings us to our report from our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, a couple, couple of updates for you tonight. Want to start off first with FEMA is on site. The, they opened up a disaster recovery center as a result of the flooding and the storms that took place on June 20th and 21st. And kudos to Mike Mestus and his team and Department of Homeland Security for, you know, getting the FEMA folks up here to take a look at the damage that was caused during those events, and then being able to get that ultimately tied into the disaster declaration with the fires in Ria dosso. So not only does that make us available for public assistance, it was, you know, Mr. Mestus updated you on last meeting, but this is going to allow for individual assistance claims, so properties that were damaged either by flooding, hail, wind, citizens are able to come down to fire operations to make make their claim. They were here on the ground yesterday. They're open from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The rest of the week, including Saturday, and so we're trying to get as many folks through there as we can. FEMA has actually had a team out in the county trying to solicit claims potentially if they see damage that's appropriate. And we had pretty limited activity yesterday, but Mr. Mestus reports to me that a pretty steady flow of folks today. So if you know of anybody that needs and potentially qualifies for individual assistance as it relates to those two two days and the storms that hit here, we certainly want to get folks down to fire operations to make to make a claim.
What are we doing to get the word out?
Mr. Chairman, we've used social media to do that. Mike Mestus has a very robust list of stakeholders that the word's been spread out through email communication that way. FEMA has done-
Do we have a list of people that have that initially reached out that had damage to their property?
Mr. Chairman, yes, so that was the other avenue, in addition to press releases from FEMA as well as our Public Relations Department, and then individually calling folks. I know I personally reached out to some folks that Commissioner Lanier and I had visited with. I know Mr. Mestus the same, to make sure they were aware that this opportunity was here and they should come make their claim to FEMA. So yes, we we tried to cover all the bases, in addition to FEMA being out in the county this week, trying to find folks that, you know, areas that we know were hardest hit, which in essence was the 50-500 road area of 350 and then down Highway 64, that corridor, a pretty defined area. Basically, bookends being the city of Farmington and Bloomfield and the unincorporated part of the county. So, yeah, we hope we've we've turned over every stone in terms of the communication and make sure that nobody gets left out, but the folks can also, you know, they don't have to come in to make their claim. They can do it remotely via the website that FEMA has provided, that's on part of all the press releases. In fact, we had some citizens that had prior to their arrival had already submitted claims, and so they were already in the queue when it related to to being able to have their their claim processed.
Is there a deadline for claims to be made?
Mr. Chairman, I would actually have to defer to Mr. Mestus on that one. I don't have that.
So August 30th is the initial?
Okay.
August 30th. That's great.
Yeah. Any other questions on that? A couple of other updates. I just, I did receive a phone calls today. Oh. Evidently, the FEMA Motor Home was out cruising around. So I got a phone call. What is that about? Yeah, so it was nice to be able to tell.
Yeah, did we specifically reach out to, and I can't remember his name, it's on the tip of my tongue. He spoke at the last meeting. Have we reached out to him?
Mr. Chairman, I reached out to Mr. Womble and Carol Missclure, as well as the Medina family that had suffered some pretty wide-scale destruction on their property and some flooding within their house. And then I know Mr. Mestus had communicated with other residents that he had been in contact with. So we tried to do everything we could, folks that we, you know, we knew had claims that would be eligible to make sure that they were aware of of this opportunity, so. A big kudos to the Fire Department for making the space available this week on all moments' notice. So we didn't get notice about their arrival until Thursday of last week, so we had to move pretty quick to make all this happen. But as you know, that's what we do. We move mountains to to make things like this happen for our citizens. We have a new building to dedicate and cut a ribbon on. The Rabbit and Poultry Barn down at McGee Park, which you might recall was a state-funded project, so thank you to our legislators. That project will be done before the fair starts. And we thought it would be appropriate to actually have that ribbon cut on on August 14th, which is going to be San Juan County Day at the fair. And I think we're going to shoot for 3:30, if that's okay with y'all. That would allow our our chairman to make it if we move back a half hour to 3:30. So that's what we're going to shoot for. We're going to send out invitations to our normal list of folks that we invite to ribbon cuttings and and
Can we invite Judge Gurley to come out and judge the rabbits?
Mr. Chair, we'll make sure he gets an invite. And last but not least, we, I appreciate Ms. Mark pointing out the success we've had with grants. It's certainly been a team effort and and the budget, by the way, kudos to all of our elected officials, department heads department heads, and especially the Finance Department for putting that together. That's an enormous task and something we don't take lightly. But we were successful with two grants to the New Mexico Match Fund. That was a fund that the legislature created last year. Appropriate, I believe, it was $65 million. They made the grant opportunity available, and we didn't waste any time. The same day it was available, we got two grant requests in for one, to assist with the match, and this funding can only be used to assist with federal grant matches, okay? So it can't be used for any other purposes other than federal grant matches. And we had the project, the funding we received for the self-contained breathing apparatus that had a $495,000 match requirement for the county. We were able to apply and receive $495,000 from the state of New Mexico to fund that match requirement. And then the Chrissy Grant, which was the grant we submitted on to continue, you know, the the engineering, preliminary engineering and NEPA study associated with the Four Corners Freight Rail Project, we received a million-dollar match request, and so that will pair up with the request we have in the Hopper to the Federal Railroad Administration for for $4 million, and hopefully all goes well. We hear of an award roughly in the September timeframe, but we actually have that match in place and can make good on on moving that project.
We have the match on that project.
We do, per the New Mexico Match Fund. We were successful with the application, so I'm happy to report that.
Well, that helps us pay for a parking lot.
It does. It does. And that that concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions you might have?
Do you have any questions for Mr. Stark? Brings us to reports from elected officials. Do we have any elected officials that have any reports?
Chairman. Sorry.
Thought we were good on that.
And members of the Commission, I would just like to report to you that we did conduct our audit on, I'm sorry, our recount on July 9th, and then we conducted our audit voting systems check on July 10th, and there were no discrepancies. So Sandra Lanier was the winner of County Commission District 3.
By how many votes?
Oh.
Well done, thank you. Any reports from any other elected officials? I'll open it up to department heads. Any any reports from department heads? No bridge update requests or anything like that? All right, that brings us to comments input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to- Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes and to subjects the Commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Is there anybody that has a comment? Not seeing anybody. It appears as though we do have a need for a closed session.
I move that we go into closed executive session to discuss the following items pursuant to Section 10-15-1 H27 to discuss threatened or pending litigation concerning the Energy Transition Act.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume it passes unanimously. We will be in executive closed session. Thank you.